Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting regular session for March 5th, 2014. Can I get a roll call?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman, Vice Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner David Caveney.
Here.
Commissioner Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Sipple.
Present.
Alternate Kyle Paul.
Here.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for the agenda?
Vice Chairman, I would like to ask that we move items number 14, which is case Z13-37. I won't read the whole thing, it's on the agenda at the back of the room. And Z13-36 to our consent agenda as presented on our agenda this evening.
Thank you. Do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to speak? So, I have any questions?
You need a second, and then you need to vote on the motion.
Oh, okay.
Then you open the public hearing.
Well, no, I just wanted to know if anybody had any issues to speak.
But you need a second first.
Okay.
Before you discuss.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and a second by Commissioner Sipple. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item, number six, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to respond to the criticisms asking staff to review a matter common upon or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Is there anybody here for those? Okay. Seeing no one speak under this presence, I'd like to move to the consent agenda. On the consent agenda is item number seven, oh, I gotta read the paragraph. I'm trying my first run on the dais as chair. So, on the consent agenda, consent public hearing items will be heard at one time. Public hearing, after the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of the members of commission or staff, any item may be removed from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consented public hearing and approved under a single motion. Do we have anybody that'd like to speak? I'd like to open the public hearing. Now, would anybody like to speak upon any of the consent items? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to close.
Just as a matter of, of course, you might want to read what the items are on the public hearing consent agenda and then ask if there's anybody wanting to speak on those items.
Okay.
And then if there's nobody wanting to speak on those items, then you can close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
All right, thank you. Okay, the items on the consent agenda is item number seven, S13-03, request to approve Plimary Platt and Open Space Plan for Cooper Ranch. Item number eight, S13-11, Plimary Platt and Open Space for Veterans Home at the Enclave. Item number nine, UP13-22, a request for conditional use permit for approximately 3.9 acres at Lindsay and Williamsfield. Item number 10, UP13-23, request for conditional use permit for Trapeze U located at 144th Street in Pecos. Item number 11 is being requested for continuance, which is UP13-24. It's the Dunkin' Donuts located at Higley and Ray Road. Item number 12, Z14-03, request to amend ordinances to remove approximately 4.5 acres of real property at Palomino Creek and Spectrum. Item number 13, Z14-04, to remove four acres of real property located and amend the ordinance to remove 4 acres to Higley and Elliott. And then the added items to the consent agenda, which is item number 14, Z13-37, request to amend ordinances adopted by Town of Gilbert for 24 acres located at Wade and Best. Then, last item is item 16, Z13-36, which is use permit, or no, sorry, that's not...
Amend the LDC.
Yeah, amend the LDC. Okay. So, can I get a motion on the consent?
Chairman, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson. I wanted to say Bridgette, but I had to go back for the last name. And then a second for Commissioner Sipple. Go, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I have a question, or questionable.
I just thought it was Commissioner Caveney who had seconded that motion.
Oh, I did.
I think they both, I think they both did, so it's...
All right, go with Sipple, that's fine. He can take the brunt.
Whoever the chair chooses in that case.
Yeah, yeah. I'll give you the next one. Next one.
Okay, so, on to the non-consent items. Item, public hearing, non-consent. Non-consent hearing items are to be heard at individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion during the public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment in support or in opposition of the public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on the public hearing, you must fill out a public comment card, which is on the back table. I don't know if they're blue or green today, but they are a colored little form. Indicating the item number which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there'll be no more, no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. Item number 15. Mike. Fifteen. Oh, sorry, case, item number 15 is Z13-11, Behavioral Health Hospitals, request to amend the Town of Gilbert's Land Development Code Division 6 using definitions, revising the define for hospital and to include behavioral health services. Mike Malo.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ailer, members of the commission. Case Z13-11 is a request to amend the land development code for behavioral health hospitals so that behavioral health hospitals can be included within the definition of hospitals within the land development code. This item has been seen on two occasions by the Planning Commission, and let me just take a look at the history here. So, the Planning Commission first discussed this in July of 2013, and at that time, there was a wide-ranging discussion, but the commission did not initiate it. In December of 2013, the Planning Commission then conducted a second citizen review meeting in order to take additional public testimony and discuss it again, and they also initiated the amendment at that time. Staff has done some extensive research on behavioral health hospitals associated with this proposed text amendment. And by way of background, there were two behavioral health facilities that were locating or attempting to locate within the Town of Gilbert last year. And depending upon the zoning districts that behavioral health facilities would like to go into, they are either permitted by right as health facilities, or they are conditionally permitted by a use permit. In both of the cases where the facilities were looking to go in, the facilities would have been permitted by right because they were in the GC, General Commercial Zoning District. And so, the only review that those facilities needed to go through was the Design Review Board process, which approves the site plan, the landscaping, and the architecture for the facilities. Town Council asked staff to look into behavioral health facilities and determine if perhaps we should have different procedures, perhaps a different use definition for behavioral health hospitals, and perhaps have some sort of additional regulations that would create buffers or separation distances. They asked us to look at a wide range of methods for regulating these types of uses. So, what I will do is basically go to what the planning staff has found, basically five main findings based on our research. We looked at behavioral health facilities that are located within the state of Arizona and the uses that are classified within zoning codes at various communities within the state of Arizona. We also looked outside of Arizona to communities where we know they have several behavioral health facilities that have been operating for some time. And basically, what we found is that most cities classify inpatient behavioral health hospitals under their general definition of hospitals. So, here in the valley, we looked at Chandler, Glendale, Phoenix, Scottsdale, and Tempe. We also looked at Tucson, and we looked at Prescott. Out of all of those communities, all but one of those communities classifies behavioral health under the general hospital definition. Prescott is the only one out of those in-state communities, and they classify these as assisted living facilities if they are offering behavioral health and they are inpatient facilities. What we found, again, is that, similar to Gilbert, these types of hospital facilities are either permitted by right in certain zoning districts, or they are permitted by going through a conditional use permit process. In Gilbert, the conditional use permit process takes these facilities in particular districts to the Planning Commission for final approval. In other communities, both the planning and zoning commissions, as well as the city or town councils, need to approve those conditional use permits. So, Gilbert, again, is right in line with other communities by having these types of facilities either permitted by right or in certain other districts conditionally permitted by use permit. None of the 10 cities surveyed require any type of separation distances or special buffering around behavioral health facilities. They basically need to meet the same base zoning district setback requirements, and so there's nothing special about these facilities in terms of site development regulations that would require buffer zones around the behavioral health facilities. One of the items that we found particularly interesting is that when we looked at all of the regulations surrounding healthcare facilities, we went to the Arizona Department of Health Services, we looked at the regulations specifically for behavioral health services, and you can see that they define inpatient services as behavioral health service provided in a psychiatric acute hospital, including a psychiatric unit in a general hospital, a residential treatment center for persons under the age of 21, or a subacute facility. So, they have regulations that categorize behavioral health facilities exactly the same as hospitals. I mean, they may have some special regulations associated with behavioral health facilities, but for the purpose of where they categorize them, they're categorized the same as hospitals. We also looked at crime, and the reason we looked at crime is, if you go a little bit back in the, I think it's just one page, back in the staff report, there were certain perceptions about these facilities when they were discussed at the design review meetings and the town council meetings where these facilities were discussed. And so, there was some perception that there would be some crime or greater crime associated with these types of facilities, and especially the proximity of these facilities to schools. What we found in looking at the police call information, and we had our police department look at the statistics as well, we found that the police calls for service really aren't much different than other types of facilities. In fact, if you compare specifically hospitals to behavioral health hospitals, the number of police calls for service are greater at hospitals than at specialized behavioral health facilities. So, based on those five findings, what staff is recommending in this text amendment is including very specifically, to make it clear, behavioral health hospitals within the hospital definition. So, I'll just turn to that. This is typical of our legislative drafts, so anything that would be stricken from the existing definition would be in cross-out. There's nothing that we're actually striking here, but we are adding some new terminology so that the new definition of hospital would be a facility licensed by the state that provides health services, including diagnosis and treatment of patients and inpatient care by a medical staff. And then specifically stating that this does include behavioral health hospitals providing inpatient medical care. This specific definition was actually taken from the land use assessment analysis that I mentioned previously, that the town is looking at and reviewing currently. And so, where these are provided for, this seems to be a definition that makes clear that behavioral health, inpatient care, is part of the hospital definition. That's the proposal that staff is presenting, and I'll be happy to answer any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Mike, I appreciate that. I do, I don't have any objection to the language, but I do have a concern about, once the language is accepted, if it gets accepted in this manner or this fashion, then it would typically be allowed under the use regulations as it applies to the CC and RC and the office and the employment district. My concern would be, I really think that we need to separate out behavioral health facilities. We had that rather robust and enormous conversation in the community back in July, and I think the mothers have a legitimate concern. Of course, the timing was bad because of the tragic event in Connecticut at the time, but in fact, if it is, is that I do think that we should have some separation. I do think we should have some buffers for behavioral health institutions, especially if they have psychopathic patients and drug, I guess, addiction behavior. So, the point is, is what I would like to have the town consider is, if you want to go forward with this language, again, which I don't have any objection to, I think that we do put, we do need to put limitations on how the use is permitted. So, if we go forward allowing it to be permitted in the four areas that it's already permitted, I think we should allow, or we should stipulate a limitation for separation and for buffering. Okay?
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Any other questions for staff? Commissioner Peterson?
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Mr. Malo, based on what Commissioner Powell just said, that would, to be able to change the setbacks for just behavioral health hospitals, they would have to be looked at completely differently. Wouldn't that be a different kind of amendment that we would be looking at as far as, if they're, excuse me, if they're allowed, they're allowed with whatever setbacks are allowed in general commercial, regional commercial, and the like that they're allowed, that we're offering for them to be allowed in. If we were going to change the requirements for them, then we would specifically need to change the requirements for behavioral health hospitals and not move forward with this language. Is that correct? Am I understanding that correctly?
Commissioner Peterson, yes, that is correct. We'd have to somehow separate out the behavioral health facilities so that there was either a limitation in the use tables that would require some separation distance or buffers around them, perhaps add some site development regulations that would specify what those distances or buffering would be. So, to be different than what we're proposing.
Let me just follow that up. As you look at the use tables under the four categories that we alluded to, it already shows some separation. It has the general category hospitals, and then it has, it has the health facilities and the clinics and so forth and so on. So, I don't think it has to be enormously complicated to accomplish that goal that I suggested. I think we make it a line item under the use regulations, and then under that line item, you simply stipulate a limitation. And the limitation defines exactly what the separation distance might be or the buffering. And it's really just that simple.
So, make sure we understand here then, because I hear what's being said, but I want to make sure we do it right or can do it right if we're going to do this. So, we're saying that we keep this definition for hospitals now to include behavioral health. I mean, that's, it's how it's written now. But then you're saying that in the regional commercial definition or the requirements within there, we specify a unique setback for behavioral health. Is that right?
Yeah, because, for instance, if you look under the PFI use permits, or if you look under the employment district, it specifically already separates out hospital, and then it says permit. And then there's another line item that says urgent care facility, it says permit. And it's all included under healthcare facilities. So, we simply establish another line item that says behavioral health facilities, and we put L, which means it's permitted, subject to a limitation. That way, we allow these facilities to be built, but we allow them to be appropriately built so that it protects the interest of the community, especially children and families.
So, by permit, and I don't have it in front of me, but that means that they would have to come in for a conditional use permit for each thing?
Yes.
Okay, at that point, we impose the additional regulations of distance between...
Well, we, I think the limitation could be written so that it has a minimum separation distance. That's what limitations are. And then at that particular time, it's easily defined, it's already set.
Okay, I have a question from staff.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, the way the LDC is constructed, each of those line items in the table, hospital, urgent care, medical offices, all have separate definitions. So, if you were to do that, it would not be a simple matter of taking this definition that we're proposing and separating it out. The behavioral health facility would have to have a separate definition.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
If that's the way you want to go, then you would deny this, you know, recommend denial on this one, and we'd move forward from there.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate the clarification. Then, with that information, I would not be in favor of this language.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
And commissioners, I have put up the commercial use table so you can see exactly what Attorney Smiley is talking about. So, we have an overall category called healthcare facilities, and then individual definitions of use is underneath that. In this case, hospital, urgent care, medical offices, and clinics. And so, each of those in our use definition section of the code have separate definitions. And so, you could see some of them are permitted in all of the districts, whereas hospitals are only permitted in two out of the five districts.
What are those two? I just can't see the top of that chart.
Okay, so the top of the chart there, so GC and RC is where they're permitted by right.
I guess a couple of questions that I have, just in the definition for the alcohol narcotic, narcotic, narcotic. Is that, would that be like a methadone clinic, or what would that tie into, since that would be establishing narcotics? So, counsel, please help.
Can I address this?
Yes.
I would recommend against this language, I would, I would, instead of that, because there are other addictions that might be treated at a mental health or a behavioral health hospital, I would take out the alcoholic, narcotic, and psychopathic patients and put in treatment of addiction and mental illnesses. Because also, the way this is worded, you may have patients who are alcoholics, narcotics, and psychopaths who are being treated for other conditions in a general hospital. But I think this is meant to address specific facilities for treatment of addictions and mental illnesses. So, I would just tweak that wording a little bit.
Thank you.
I have a couple more other comments. I know that you mentioned the number of police responses, and one of the reasons why I suggested what I have suggested is because all it takes is one bad response. So, even though the numbers may be less in relation to the behavioral health hospitals, it's a nice comparison, but in reality, if we were to have a significant event, then those numbers would be irrelevant. So, really, I would rather err on the side of caution. I just want to make sure that we do everything to protect the community, the children and families, schools, parks, or whatever else, for people who may be very vulnerable if in case there was an incident.
Commissioner Peterson?
Okay. The issue that I have with that is that you can have the same kind of an incident on any given day, hopefully, we would never see that here in Gilbert, in any one of the three hospitals that we have. There have been... There have been incidences in hospitals, in the East Valley even, over time, and it can happen anyplace. I would think the number of calls compared to the number of calls at typical hospitals, I'll refer to them as, are less for these hospitals than they are for the typical hospitals. I worked up at a hospital in East Mesa, and the police were there quite often because there's a larger number of people coming and going. There's more patients, there's more staff, there's more potential, if you will, to have the issues than in a smaller situation that you'll have in this kind of a facility that probably is even a little more strict to begin with because of the types of addictions and mental illnesses and things that they are dealing with. So I would think that they're already working harder to make sure things like that don't happen. It's harder in a larger facility like the hospitals that we already have here in town. Like I said, please, God forbid, that anything happened in one of those facilities. But it can happen anywhere, anytime, any day. And to treat these differently, it's hard for me to see that.
That's, actually, I concur with all of that. That's the point I'm actually trying to make, and I think that you've actually reinstated my position. I'm simply saying I'm not, I'm not, not in favor of allowing behavioral hospitals to be built. I am in favor of allowing them to be built. I just simply want to add one more precaution. So because they are behavioral health facilities and they do have an established type of client, then I'm simply suggesting that we add more caution. And that caution would be a separation or a buffer. So they can still be built, they can be developed in all these areas. We just take one more step in being careful.
Any other questions, staff? Comments?
One more, one more, please, sorry. Phyllis, sorry, Councilor Smiley. Do they become a protected class in any way? I mean, we've just had a major discussion about this for other topics.
Commissioner Peterson, members of the commission, as far as a protected class, it's not the persons here that you're talking about, it's the facility and the land use. So I don't, I think you're trying to mix apples and oranges a little bit here.
Okay.
Because you're talking about a land use.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to verify that.
If I could just elaborate on that, I mean, it's not residential. I mean, because it's, yeah, I mean, it's, so it's, it's not a housing issue.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions last? All right. Since we don't have an applicant, since the town's the applicant, I want to open it for the public to speak. We don't have any cards up here, but is there anybody that'd like to speak in the audience? Okay, I don't see, oh, we have one. So could you come up here? You can fill out a card afterwards, but if you can come up, state your name, town of residence.
Dina Greenwald-Gilbert. And I agree with Councilman Peterson. If you look at the folks that come into a regular hospital, a traditional medical hospital, you have inmates that come into those hospitals, you have other folks that already have drug issues coming into those hospitals, you have people who've been in accidents that are under the influence coming in those hospitals. You have, in my opinion, a higher risk of an incident with that than you do a behavioral health center. And I don't think you should stigmatize those folks by asking for additional buffers. If they fit into the hospital definition, then they should be considered a hospital and treated that way. So I would say that it would be to Gilbert's benefit to follow the lead of what some of the other cities have done in doing that, and just make sure that the facility has the, within the regulations that are already there for a hospital.
Any questions for the speaker? No, all right. No questions, thank you. Oh.
Not for the applicant, for Mike. Mike, so, okay, so back to the hospitals. What kind of separation do we require for hospitals? Any, from anything, or just normal property line setbacks? I mean, is there any restriction to hospitals as a general category?
Commissioner Caveney, we don't have any special separation distances. What they basically do is follow the site development standards, IE setbacks and perimeter landscaping setbacks of the base zoning district. In certain districts, we do require conditional use permits for them, and conditions obviously could be added in those cases, but where they're permitted, they follow the base zoning districts.
Okay. You know, just to kind of, I certainly appreciate Commissioner Powell's comments. I'm not sure I'm as troubled by the concern, but I empathize with it and wish there was a way maybe to implement it without, without changing all the work that's been done to get where we're at today. At this point, I perhaps would be willing to move forward with it, perhaps with the adjustment made to the language regarding the psychopathic type patient, yeah.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak before we come back? Okay, I see none. With that, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion and possible motion.
Chairman, I think over the several times that we've seen this issue, we've kind of discussed the possibilities of a conditional use permit, not having a conditional use permit, whether we needed to change the definition, whether we needed to specifically add behavioral hospitals into the definition or not. And this is the way that, I think it's all washed out to this point. I'm comfortable with the way that staff's presented it this evening. I like the addition that Councilor Smiley made, or the change to, change the wording just a little bit as presented tonight, and I'm comfortable to move this forward at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
You know, this is one of those, I think that you could toss a coin and probably be just as fine one way or the other. But I can't help, I can't forget the huge outcry from mothers in the neighborhood of Baseline and Greenfield who were just absolutely incensed by the fact that a behavioral health hospital is going to be built right next door to Pioneer Elementary. So considering the cry from the community to be careful how these facilities are allowed, I believe that we can reach an appropriate compromise. I think we can put these, we're not attempting to try to restrict the hospital, we're not trying to inhibit the ability of those who need to receive help from receiving help. But what we're trying to do is prevent the same situation that happened when it happened in June, in July last year. And I know none of you guys will forget that. This whole room was packed. We had mothers from everywhere coming down here, very concerned about their children. Now, it might have been reactionary, but what we need to make sure of is that if we have a behavioral health institution that specializes in substance abuse and mental health issues, just as some of those parents asked us, and they asked us, they came to us and asked us to reconsider. And at that particular time, we made every effort, in fact, the town council made every effort to acquiesce and to pull that so that those parents could have their wishes. And that behavioral health owner went someplace else, and everyone was happy. If we allow this to pass, as it's written today, those behavioral health hospitals can go anywhere. They could go right there where the parents didn't want it. So if we're to consider the best interest of our community, we need to make sure that if we approve this as it is tonight, we are allowing exactly what they're asking us not to allow. So I don't think there's any harm in going back and redrafting the language and considering a separation. We still get the hospitals, we still get the separation, everybody benefits. So as it's written tonight, I am not in favor of it, and I think we can make some adjustments that would actually improve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Sipple?
Your Honor, can I ask one question of Mike?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed this somewhere. If a hospital, and I want to use Banner for example, their Dobson branch, or the one in Mesa there, it at one point had a behavioral health wing to it, but it was within the hospital property areas, I suppose. Could Mercy Gilbert have a, could Mercy Gilbert or a hospital area do that now?
Commissioner Sipple, yes, they could. Now, it's been some time since I did the research on the individual hospitals within Gilbert and outside Gilbert, but it's actually fairly common for hospitals to have a behavioral health unit. Some of them do farm it out to other facilities. Some of them actually bring contract employees, behavioral health employees into their facilities. That was the case, as I recall, with the, what was known as Gilbert Hospital over on Power Road. And so, yes, many facilities do incorporate behavioral health units within their hospitals.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Commissioner Powell. In, in this buffer, what's your proposal of this buffer? Are you looking at a distance between each one, or are you looking at a distance from residential to the zoning? What would you be proposing at this idea?
Well, you know, buffers can come in lots of forms, but one of the best ways is simply, I mean, for sober homes, we had a separation of 1,320 feet from another sober home. So why did we have separation distances for sober homes? Well, we didn't want to bring in too many in one tight, compacted area. We're doing the same thing here. So all I'm suggesting is, is that we have a separation distance. And it doesn't have to be from everything. It could be simply from schools, public schools, it could be public schools and parks, things like that. It doesn't have to be all-inclusive. It's simply a limitation, we've simply rewrite the language, and then we assign a limitation by giving behavioral health hospitals their own class. So if we did it for sober homes, then the logic applies here as well. So that's all I was suggesting, Vice Chair.
Okay, because I look at that because I'm trying to figure this one out for myself. But in that separation, we're looking at changing the clustering. We're not looking for a cluster, not as much as one to a use from a use, but we don't, we weren't looking at having one on top of other, and we have 10 altogether. So in the separation, you're looking more to use-to-use separation, not a, not a clinic-to-clinic separation, but a, a use other than the behavioral health to that.
Yeah. We do that in all of our, in all of our zoning, we do that. If we have residential up against commercial, we have buffering. If we have residential up against industrial, we have buffering. So all I'm saying is we apply the same logic and the same principle, is that we allow a distance, a separation distance, so that it, it increases the safety factor. If we're going to buffer from residential to, to industrial, we do that because we want to make sure that the residents are separated and that they can have their residential piece without that being invaded with the industrial. And I'm simply saying the same thing here. It would bring a lot of peace of mind to mothers not to have a behavioral health hospital right next to their grade, their grade school the child goes to. So if we're going to create a buffer, call it a separation distance, and simply make some type of, establish some type of a distance, 1,000 feet, 800 feet, we can decide how far it has to be, and then go forward.
I can definitely see the separation, and just taking the example that we had in June, I can definitely see that. And I, I'm trying to think of clinics and behavioral health services that I know of and where they're located. I, we have a few, since I'm in Phoenix a lot, I see a lot of different places, driving around town. And in Phoenix, they have a location that's the county, that's directly behavioral health services and psycho, the whole group, and it's right next to a school. I'm not making that, that makes it right. I'm just, I'm just saying there is instances that we have that in our community already, and we haven't seen that. I do see that, you know, taking in the concerns of our, our town, because that's what we're here for, is taking in concerns. I don't know if a separation would make the difference. I mean, adjoining, yes, but, but we see it already, and that's where I balance. So I haven't, I'm still sitting on the fence.
So what I'm suggesting, instead of coming up with the permanent solution tonight, we can continue this. If we have to have more discussion on it, simply let us continue it, develop the discussion until we come up with something a little bit more reasonable.
You know, I don't, I don't, I don't see what it hurts to meet what, what Commissioner Powell is saying. I think, at this point, we don't have an applicant sitting here saying, hey, I'm within 500 feet and you want 525 feet between me and the next thing. We're not hurting anybody at this juncture. We're trying to establish some boundaries. I don't think that if we set a reasonable separation, this is going to be a huge impact on behavioral health centers at any point. So if we can find a way to do it, and again, it can't happen tonight, that's not the language we have before us, it would have to continue, it would have to be done next time, I don't see, as I step back, what harm it is. If we are trying to just move this measure forward, and that's why we're voting yes, then I'm a little concerned, because we certainly have a valid concern on the table. It's a fair concern. And I wasn't here for the event, I might have been the only one not in the room that night.
We never, we, the planning commission did not see the behavioral health hospital. It was a right, correct, Mike? It was, it never came? We saw, design review board did, planning commission never saw the behavioral health hospitals, either one, either location.
My point was, I didn't see that. I can't appreciate what you're saying. But, but I'm saying at this point, while we're setting some guidelines and boundaries for these things, I'm not sure I see what harm it does to establish a separation from, and I think we'd need to be careful to delineate it and give Mike some good direction here. If it's schools, it's parks, and it's maybe daycares, you know, maybe we just say that and keep it to that. I don't think you worry about residential, because then you start hurting the hospitals that, that have a wing, as we've talked about, as Commissioner Sipple pointed out. But again, I'm not sure I see the harm in that, and I'd be willing to, to jump to that point if we wanted to, as a team.
To follow up, Chairman, Vice Chair?
Yes.
The second location that the behavioral hospital tried to go into was near residential, and the neighbors in that residential area also did not want it located near them. So if we start creating separation buffers, where do we stop? Where do we start and where do we stop? Because I'm not sure, especially based on the two cases that have tried to come into Gilbert, same hospital, same company, two different locations that they tried to come into Gilbert, and they got the same argument in both locations. And it was completely different locations, but one was up against a school and one was up against residential.
Well, that's precisely the point. I think we need to have more discussion on this.
Your Honor.
Commissioner Sipple?
I'd be open to more, I'd be open to more discussion as well.
More discussion never hurts.
Okay.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not opposed to discussion, I just need to, I'm trying to wrap my head around where we're going to go with this and what kind of direction that we're going to give staff. And this amendment that we have in front of us is for an amendment to the LDC for use definitions specifically, so I think we're talking a completely different amendment. And my, and my staff is shaking their head yes. So I know that it would be a So I know that it would be a completely different amendment, so I don't know, do we continue this one? And have you come back with some more information as to what it would entail to do the other thing? Because what Commissioner Powell is suggesting isn't part of this amendment that we're seeing in front of us tonight.
Vice Chair Ayler, Commissioners, what I would probably suggest at this juncture is probably have us do a little bit more research, see how we might be able to accommodate this, because what I think I'm struggling with is how, if these facilities are part of hospitals, how do we separate them out in order to then create distance separation? But we can take a look at that and then maybe bring it back to in a study session with a couple of different options, and then narrow that down so that we advertise it correctly when we actually have the amendment before you for action.
I have a question, Council.
I do have a question for the Commission. When we take it back to staff for consideration, would the Commission be interested in a proposal that included perhaps a conditional use permit? And if so, would a conditional use permit be required for all hospitals? Because most of the hospitals would have some sort of mental health facilities within You can't really discuss that proposal, but if that's where we were coming back. And also, if that is the direction that we're going, we probably would need to re-advertise this. So it wouldn't come back to you probably, well, it might come back in April, but more likely it would be made.
Thank you.
I would, I would be opposed to a conditional use permit for all hospitals. I mean, at this point, Gilbert has three hospitals, things can change, things can go away, and people might want to come in and develop another one at some point. But like Commissioner Sipple brought up, Banner Desert did have a behavioral health wing for a very long time. Then I believe Banner Health had their own Banner Health facility in Scottsdale that was for behavioral health. But any hospital can, and like the speaker said, the types of patients you get in, you just never know, and when you might need to hold somebody in a separate area, and does that become a behavioral health area? I'm a little fuzzy on that, so I'd be a little leery to go ahead and say a conditional use permit for any and all hospitals.
I agree with that, Vice Chair, I say a couple, I agree with that, I'm not sure. I think, what I think I need is a little bit more understanding of the options. I mean, do we really need to back up all the way and come at this a whole different angle? Is this, is this a different class of development from hospitals now? I mean, rather than marry them up, maybe we keep them, I don't know the options, but I think we need to know that before we can discuss direction on what to do with it. And I think, to say it is pretty straightforward, we want to do what we're doing, but create this separation from those unique uses like schools, et cetera. And I think we ought to perhaps give some guidance on, or maybe we need more research on this, on the type of separation we're talking about, the real distance. Are we talking just a few hundred feet, or are we talking a long ways? I don't know.
I would suggest that we simply deny, we simply deny this proposal the way it's written tonight, and then invite the town to have a stakeholders group, just like Mike suggested, and that we draft new language. And do what you said, consider whether we want to make this a hospital or not, if we want it separated. But if we're going to go forward on this, then really need to deny it tonight, the way it's been written, and then ask the town to reconsider it.
Right, I just want to be able to know where we're headed at the next meeting, that's all I'm saying.
If we make a recommendation on denial on this that's been proposed to us tonight, we are making that recommendation to the town council, and then they have the purview to decide however they want on this that's been presented to them. So if you...
Okay, so then let's just continue it so that we can improve the language.
If that's the purview of the Commission, I just wanted to point out that whatever you vote on tonight is only a recommendation to the town council, we don't have final say. So it will go to them, whatever is sent to them tonight.
Okay.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes.
It's, we have some new Commissioners, and so we have been talking about this subject for a very long time. We didn't have either one of the cases come in front of us, like I said, they did go to Design Review Board, and I know a lot of parents went to the town council in between at meetings and so forth. And we didn't have, we didn't have any time to discuss this with the public. They didn't come to this unless they came to our study session to talk about it. And we had some very impassioned people come and discuss behavioral health, and when we were discussing the recovery residences at the same time, they kind of got mixed together a little bit, if you will, and we had, we had some people come in to talk about it at that point. But I wanted to point out that we do have new Commissioners, this has been going on for a long time. Some of this discussion, we've already had. It's been done, but we're now with a new group of people and we're having it all over again, and kind of going back, I'd say, a little bit, to where we were six or seven months ago. And next month, we may have two new Commissioners.
Well, I think that's fine, but I don't see any sense of urgency. I mean, it's not like we've got...
The town's the applicant, like you said, the town's the applicant.
Exactly.
But I wanted to point out that if you did make a decision on it tonight, it would go to the town council, and they would have final say on this that's been presented to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson.
Well, it's a good discussion that we have, and I plan to see that we'll have some more, because I'd like to see if we have a motion.
Commissioner Powell will do it.
Thank you. I move that we continue this item, Z-13-11, Behavioral Health Hospitals, for further discussion, and invite the town to have a stake, either a stakeholders group, or what did he call it? What did you call it, Mike?
Well, I don't know if we'll have...
He called it a study session.
A study session, yeah, not a stakeholders, just have a study session on it, and that we reconsider the language and come up with something, something else.
So the next one, we won't be, we'll just be discussing again, we won't be asking, making a decision at that point.
Probably so, and I also think that it might be in our best interest to ask for continuance for at least two months, so that we have time with the new Commissioners to allow them to participate.
We could continue to a further date, couldn't we? Just a future date, I mean, because, could we?
I'm speechless, because we need, we need, we had a motion that went on forever, we didn't have a second, and we're kind of discussing it. So perhaps you would like to withdraw your motion, and we'll discuss what kind of a motion you want to make.
Okay, I'll withdraw the motion until we're prepared to make a more defined motion.
Okay. Now, you can continue the matter to a date certain, or you can table the matter, and we will bring it back when we feel ready. If you want to continue it to the April meeting and have it brought back in a study session, we can do that, too.
Okay, thank you. So I move that we table the matter for further discussion, Z-13-11.
I have a question to that.
Do you have a second?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So my question is, if we table it, then will we be seeing it in April, or is it just, it's open until we feel it's ready to come back? Because I would like to have that discussion in April, so we're not pushing it month to month.
Okay, then maybe you want to amend the motion to table it and bring it back to a study session in April. Or you could continue it to a study session in April.
Okay, so I'll restate the motion. I move that we table Z-13-11 so that we can have a study session and bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
In April.
In April.
Do I have a second?
Second again.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Powell, and a second by Commissioner Cavy. Any opposed? No, so continued.
Motion passes.
Motion passes to for a continuance, or a table.
Tabled.
Tabled. Thank you.
I have a headache.
Looking for my notes. Okay. So item number 17, administrative items, the minutes for approval of meeting on February 5th, 2014. Commissioner Sipple?
Yes, so I was tasked to be reading these, so I read them, and it was semantics, my name was spelled wrong a couple times, but I'm okay with that. So with that, I'll approve the minutes from the February 5th, 2014, study session and regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion for approval of minutes by Commissioner Sipple, and a second by Commissioner Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 5-0. On to communication. Item number 18, report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events.
Pick me.
Commissioner Peterson.
I just wanted to point out, if any of you haven't seen it, the digital state of the town is available on the Town of Gilbert website and probably on YouTube. It was, it's quite the video, and I think everybody should just go take a look at it, especially since we're planning Commissioners, and it's nice to see where the town stands, where our history is, and where we're going. I also wanted to report that I've been, I was asked to act as the liaison to the Transportation Steering Committee. I've been to a couple of meetings, the last one, we saw three draft sections of the transportation plan, they're doing a great job with it, and we're planning to meet again in March with a few more sections of that plan. And I don't want to take any thunder from our council member since she's here, but they'll be interviewing planning Commissioners, and they're changing the interview process for our Commissioners also, which, for boards and commissions also, the town council's changing their process, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Commissioner Sipple?
About three weeks ago, maybe a month ago now, Gilbert PD had put our school in a lockdown, and so I just want to commend them for the process that they went through. There was an issue in the neighborhood behind us. The officer, the resource officer from Williams Field came over to our school, was on our campus the entire three-hour ordeal, but the Gilbert PD did a phenomenal job keeping the staff and the kids safe, and that issue did escalate into another community and was quite an ordeal. But we want to, just, I wanted to publicly thank the Gilbert PD and a great job that they did for us and for our community.
Thank you. Okay, any others? No? Okay. On to item 19, report from Council Aza.
I don't have anything specific to add, but I do want you to know that a lot of the work that you have been doing over the past couple of months is coming to us in our next two meetings, and so outcomes will be determined, and we appreciate your efforts to help steer us and guide us in the right direction. I know that what comes before you isn't always clear-cut and easy, and that you guys invest a lot of time, energy, and effort in making good decisions, and we appreciate that very much. So Bridget touched on a couple of things, transportation master plan, and we're now entering budget cycles as well, which are always exciting conversations with the town, but we will see another great year for Gilbert as we start our new fiscal year, July 1. And again, a lot of it has to do with the leadership that we have on our boards and commissions, you included, so thanks again.
Thank you. On to item number 20, report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Ayler and Commissioners. I just wanted to take a moment to introduce our new Assistant Town Attorney. His name is Jack Vincent, and I believe most of you got a chance to meet him earlier, so we're really happy to have him assist us with our land use matters.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to mention that the Vestar Major General Plan Amendment has been continued to the town council's March 27th meeting.
Well, we'll be eager to hear what comes out of that one. Okay, well, that's it. To adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Adjourned.